Welcome everybody to our July meeting of the Venues and Communications Committee, Wednesday 13th of July. First on the agenda is 19622, declarations of any discussable community interests. None, volunteers? Okay, thank you. Moving on then to 19722, apologies for absence Karen. Thank you. So 19822, the minutes of the June meeting held on the 8th of June 22, which were received by full council on 28th of June. Are you happy for me to sign those as a true record of the meeting held on the 8th of June?
I'd read.
Read? 19922, the action points from the previous meetings. We had a distributed public consultation questionnaire on the future of town events delivery. As a draft revised communications strategy, David.
So the first one, the public consultation questionnaire for future events. We did draft a questionnaire and it will go out. It didn't go out because I've been on holiday for a couple of weeks and it was still a bit raw after the Jubilee events. And actually, I wanted if there was any brewery that's going to come from it, I want it to be here when it happens. But we have structured a questionnaire which basically says, and I will send it around to the committee, I apologise for not having it with me. We will send it around Hazel and I before we actually physically go public with it. But the crux of the questionnaire is to say that we annually do up to four different town events. They usually revolve around heritage and Christmas and the second part, but have been things like Soapbox Challenge and things like that. So a bit of flexibility with the other two. We also talk about, we also give them an option of their expectations of how much as a council we should spend on the events. But we actually, I think we stated how much our budget is currently.
Yeah, that's good.
And also some other options for them to suggest what we should do. There's a little section in the community strategy that you'll come to. And the second part of these action points will be covered in Agenda Item 20322, where we also have put into the strategy document that we will actually formulate a panel. Because there was a lot of chatter on Facebook about people would like to engage with us. And so again, we did a bit of research with other town councils. And there was a Yorkshire Town Council that actually implemented a Friends Of panel of about 20 to 24 members of the public. You have to actually apply. So that way they can ensure that they get a really wide age range, for instance. So there's youth involved as well as some of the senior members of the community. Also, you know, a diverse spread of gender and etcetera. So I think we should be doing the same. And then periodically, we can go out and say that we're thinking about doing this. What are your opinions? And if they've really taken an interest in wanting to engage and give us their opinion, it's a snapshot of part of our community before we go out to possibly other consultation avenues. So we can use that as a bit of an opportunity to fine tune our consultation documents.
Well, sounds to be brilliant idea, as usual. But when it's set up, will it be a residence and then with officers? Or will councillors be involved?
No, it will be controlled by this committee. So we've had a bit of a discussion in the office. Because, I'll be honest with you, if you want to check it, it's Skipton Town Council in Yorkshire. That's the one that we looked at. And really nice little town actually, very, very community minded. Yes, beautiful. So but actually, I think it's really worthwhile a couple of times a year, especially when you're going through budget setting, which will be starting in September. And also a sort of an almost debrief in April when you finish your year. But you have a face to face. But a lot of it will be communication via, you know, here's the next documentation. This is what we're thinking about. What are your views? But twice a year, you could get 2024 people in the Carnegie or the Guildhall and we can have a face to face. And they're part of the process of where we formulate our budgets and our events and our strategies for the following year.
So we'll be able to see what the members of the panel are suggesting?
So taking Skipton's example, they do actually ask for an application for, so they would have to apply to come on the panel. So again, it would be this committee that would fine tune who we select. But I think we need someone who's, you know, no disrespect, but we want someone with a positive attitude, who really wants to help us and also, you know, push the good of the town. So I think it's, you know, I think the committee at the last meeting sort of almost suggested that that's what you wanted to do. And some of the conversations across Facebook, certainly post Jubilee, was suggesting that they wouldn't mind helping. So let's engage with them.
Brendan.
Yeah, a couple of points on where you've answered Dennis before I mentioned my events. The panel, obviously, yeah, you do have to interview them. And I think when you're interviewing, you're saying, ask them, what is it that they are going to bring to the table?
Yeah.
Because what you want is you want somebody that's out there in the field and they are listening to people so that comes back. So although on social media, because now to my point, I think that, say, just say you was doing it this year. So that, when that document goes out, the document will stay the same, but you might change the event next year. So because the people have answered you. So if your budget's set in this year, you're doing it for next year. So next year, you'll be doing it for the year after. So next year, they might say, can we have a Soapbox Challenge and a big river festival? Right? So a lot of people have sort of had to look at it and said, yeah, that's a great idea. That's what we're planning. But the following year, they might ask for something else. So it's something that needs regular turnover.
Yeah.
If we do Soapbox Challenge for the next 10 years, how boring. For some people, they don't like Soapbox. So what we're doing, if we do this every year, and it doesn't matter that you've got the same panel members. But I just think that needs to go every year, not the whole document. Because once you say it out, people understand what it is. And if they don't understand, they can ask for the document, can't they? I just think we should be doing.
So in terms of, and this is a very, very early draft of what we're looking at. So I just need a couple of days to fine tune this. But this will be circulated to all of you. And actually, it says, it actually asks them, you know, what can you bring? You know, not in these terms, but what can you bring to the table? What is your interest? What is your experience? You know, what is your vision for the town? So we can actually look at it and think, actually, this is a useful person that can steer us in the right direction. What they have to understand is, you guys are the elected members. You will make the decision in the end and no one's going to get everything that they wish for. So we have to also manage their expectations. Because, you know, it's for the councillors.
But because you've set that budget, and if the people there are listening to what people have answered you.
Yeah.
They as independents will say, well, it looks to us like you, the people have answered you and they've said this is what they want for this year. And then they're looking at it, aren't they?
But actually, I think it's also, if you've got a panel of 2024, really positive, really engaged members of this panel, they'll have an understanding of what you guys have to consider when you're putting things together. Because it's all very well saying, you know, 50 years ago, when I was a kid, one of the biggest events we looked forward to was the big carnival on the recreation ground.
Yeah.
But that was a long time ago and things change. And, you know, there's a lot more health and safety restrictions on things. So people have to understand, it's lovely to reminisce, but it might not be feasible now. But you will, they will have an understanding when we have that conversation with them. But also, you're right, Brenda, we do, I mean, again, it's your decision. But in my opinion, we've almost like said, well, Heritage Week in September and Christmas celebrations in. They're set in stone, but we've got two other options. We can be a little bit, but you're right. I mean, we did Soapbox Challenge for three years. It was a really well supported event. It was really good. But, you know, we want to do something else.
They want it back then.
Well, they do want it back. But, you know, maybe, maybe we do something along the same theme. But it's river, river related, for instance, you know. And we used to do the dragon boat races and stuff like that.
It's just changing.
Dennis, then, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. I think the most problematic thing about this whole thing is the panel members have got to be such a wide diversity, we need to cover them, that it's going to be difficult. Because you're going to get a whole bunch of the same kind of people applying to this. And you're going to have to weed them out and then make sure we have enough youth, demographics of the town and everything's got to be done. So, well done.
And that's why I think it's probably going to be a panel sort of nearing about 24.
Yeah.
But apart from bringing them together a couple of times a year, it's quite easy to interact with them, hopefully.
Yeah, we have these things.
Mike.
Well, I think that the idea is excellent. And I think it will divert a lot of the sort of content of the issues we get. I think we do, as Dennis said, but not just the kind you were thinking of, which is different experiences and different ages and so on. But also people's minds work in different ways. And so for example, some people are full of ideas. I don't think we want 24 people full of ideas. Because we have 25 opinions all the time. We actually want some people who don't have many ideas, but they're good at adopting other people's ideas. Some people are good at starting things, some people are good at finishing things. Some people are good at stealing other people's ideas. I never had a, there was an idea in my head. But I'm very good at nicking other people's ideas and using them when it suits. And you want a variety in that sense as well. I do think that actually, although the majority need to be positive, as David said, have you wanted to never speak or might initially be useful? Two things, one of two things will happen. Either they'll realise that actually the council is grounded in good common sense and they'll cover a bit of our side and be more positive. Or, as I say, just in order to make, there'll be a lot of self selection. I don't want to be too worried about people who apply. I think we'll get people who want to be there.
Yeah.
We won't get people that don't want to be there, who want to apply. So, you know, I don't think we'll find this difficult. The lesson here might be persuading 24 people to stick their name on a piece of paper. We might need to talk to people and say, you could do this. But I do think we need a variety of attitudes as well as a variety of experiences.
With respect, I think the greatest, the greatest issue will be to find some younger people between the age of sort of 18 and late 20s. Although, having said that, the Junior Citizens Awards have thrown up two individuals in this town that have, you know, done some marvellous things. So there are the individuals out there. It's just that we're going to have to try and work hard to try and persuade them to help us and.
But if you're not meeting all the time, it's really just try to get that age meeting all the time. Because they have, you know, they might have gone through college and it's a lot of work. If they're just meeting once or twice a year, because that's all you're doing is, you're setting it up for the following year. Because you'd work a year in front of yourselves, wouldn't you? You know, you're not, you're not working for this year. If you call tomorrow, you're not doing this year. Because if you haven't got the budget.
Yeah.
And it's also, it's good for people because then they start to understand. So when they're out in the public eye and walking about and they go, look, I'm the councillor, da, da, da. Actually, their budget for this event, and don't forget it's your money, that this is all they've got for that budget and that is why it's limited.
But I think we, I think we shouldn't just think about the events bit though. Because actually, if we are only going to think about events, it's not this committee. It's the Heritage and Town Events. It's other things as well. I mean, you know, there's been a lot of criticism around the development of the marketplace. And actually, we could use a lot of people's input into how they would like to see it viewed. Because, I mean, we'll come to that a little bit later in the agenda. But I actually want to remind people of Stuart's vision. Because there's been a lot of talk about, you know, we've never had a vision. We've never been sold a vision. And actually, we did have a vision that was talked about November 2021. So I think we've had it for a long time. But again, you know, a vision is a fluid thing. A vision is something that develops in time. And actually, this group could again tell us, I've looked on the market square today and the seating area, the red line I've got, was 75% full. Every single planter seat had people on it. There were people sitting in the outside tea room. And actually, the tea room was reasonably busy. You guys were in there, you know. And actually, I looked at it, I've taken a picture. I looked at it and thought, do you know what? That's not a bad start. Now let's progress the other bits and pobs. I mean, you know, I'd probably look to the benches and thinks, they're so used, they're used so much that maybe in the future, we need those family picnic style tables that you talked about, Mike. And we can use those benches elsewhere in the town.
When we set the vision all them years ago, we knew that some parts didn't change, but it's what the total outcome. You never, we will never meet the end of that vision. Because we'll be changing according to the circumstances in them years.
Dennis, you ought to come in.
Yeah, just a little suggestion here. We have quite a bit of disgruntled youth. Everybody does, every town, every place. Can we keep, maybe try to get the limit around 16 for the lower limit? And that will bring some people. Because, you know, I mean, I had a rather long conversation with some youth out here the other week and about riding bikes onto the plinces towards paint. And if they, you know, around 16, your brain just starts settling a little bit, but not quickly. But it'd be interesting to see what kind of opinions they had in.
Yeah, I think, I think we do need to, we do need to encourage at least a couple of members of those 24 to be of a reasonable age. But there's also another opportunity. The girls, Katie and Amber are working with a lot of, they're not just primary school kids now. They're working with a lot of high school and sixth form. So maybe they can go out and do a piece of work as well. I mean, you know, they're, they're getting some really good feedback on some of the things, you know, that's going further than just our heritage figures. They're talking about other stuff as well. And I think we could get a lot of mileage out of their work.
Jenny, you ought to come in.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to throw off what David was saying about Amber and Katie. I mean, they are, we're lucky to have them, to be honest. I mean, we went to the, we went out and done a council on schools on Monday afternoon, Amber. And it was brilliant and they were tough, they were toughs. So when you're, when you're threatening, not threatening, when you're saying to little people, we're going to take the ice cream van away or we're going to cut your pay pass away. I mean, the faces were a bit, it did sound a bit low and pretend. But yeah, I think we're lucky to have them too. Because they can take that part of it into the schools. Nobody tried youth counselling. And honestly, I've been trying a couple of times previously before I come on and I was going on that. Seems that they don't, certainly they just don't want to be involved. They're quite happy to talk about it, but not be involved. So losing Amber and Katie's connections with the high schools and that, they must probably get the feedback in there because they're all more concentrated than being outside. Yeah.
Yeah, because you, just trying to answer what Jenny was saying, because 16 year olds, they're not all, you know, some of them do use their brains. Going back to the five year olds, the whole classroom, when they was told that they had to make the decision, because they had to make this decision, that we stop all ice cream vans on the road. Obviously, they all said no, but then one little boy pipes up and that's one little boy out of a whole class said, if we, if we as a council can find someone that they can park just down the bottom of the road in a car park or something, that would save the children's lives, wouldn't it? Because he had really thought about the safety, because I had, as the chair was mentioning, due to the safety of the children and, what else was it? There was the safety of the children and the blocking of the roads so that fire engines couldn't get down. So we'd really give him something to think about. And then he come up with that and I'm thinking, my God, that's for a five year old. You know, can't use a car park, can't have a licence to use a car park at the bottom of our road. Yeah, so they are thinking about it. So if a five year old, I'm sure a 16 year old, if they really wanted to, would think about.
So I'm just going to draw a line under that because we've got some other things. Just a couple of points that from my observation in, when we send this out, be some kind of preamble or just setting the scene. I'm just conscious that we are, you know, just the town council. It doesn't stop people having opinions on what they would like to see happening on other people's venues. But I'm very conscious that, you know, if people say, why are we doing on the green again? Why, what's happening in the prior? And you think, well, obviously, they're not in our gift to give those things. But at the same time, I think we need to help distinguish, people perceive the council, don't they? And, you know, we've got to say, we are looking for the town events or town that's on the town council thing. That doesn't mean to say we won't liaise with other organisations. But at the same time, we've got to be realistic in what we can deliver through this. In that, you know, whether we say that, you know, we're working. Because this is Venues and Communications meeting. So we're doing this through here on Tuesday. Because it's our venue, our marketplace, Guildhall Carnegie. But we're also doing it as a communication aspect, communication with our, with the public in the town to understand, you know, as a council, we're communicating with them and allowing them to comment. Which we can then feed that through to the likes of Breckling or Greater Tech. Or whoever's doing things. So I think, you know, if we can just phrase that, you know, to give people a realistic option. And then in terms of the makeup of that, I think we don't want to be perceived as blocking people to engage with it. But I understand your need for positive and doers. Mike's, you know, rightly saying, you don't want everybody just sitting there pontificating. You actually go roll the sleeves up and get on to do stuff. And also, you want to have people who have something to bring to the table as well. A lot of people with ideas and, I think, but if you've got the lights on, the Bell Hotel or somebody like that, or somebody who's going to bring an extra dimension to it and we can piggyback on whatever they're doing, the Brex vintage or, you know, organisations that are there that we don't know about or we won't know about in the future.
Well, sometimes you're sitting there, you're working at an event, aren't you? And you miss out the most silliest things. For example, the Punjab, there was no toilets. You know, you've got them, we've got our toilets. But was that enough for how many people turned up? It wasn't, was it? So there was a bit, there's a bit on Facebook about they weren't allowed to go in the restaurants that was on that, that's it, some places. Was it cinema letting in? But, you know, when you think, how many people are going to have there? Should we have brought portaloos? Not us, because it wasn't our event. And somebody, what we're doing at the event, might come up today and say, do you think we should be in the meeting? It might say, I think we forgot this. Because they might have run an event somewhere and that little thing went wrong. And mention it today, because nobody remembers everything, do they?
I think there's a, I think there's, yeah, there's a couple of good points in terms of, I mean, there are people on Facebook mentioning no names who, through whatever reason, understand the three tier system and the responsibilities attached to it. And I think what you probably hopefully will get is another 2024 people that through this process will understand that and can be advocates to others in trying to explain that to people. Rather than if we try and do it, it's almost like, well, you're just going to pass the buck. And it's not. And the second thing is, I think Stuart's right, we also, and Mike's right, we have to differentiate between what they actually want to do. We're trying to create a Friends Of panel. Because someone might say, look, I'm not very good at the ideas. But once there's an idea, just let me go and I'll help you. I'll roll my sleeves up and help at an event. And that's even better really, if we get some extra help. So I think, you know, what we'll do is we'll circulate the document. All have a bit of input, but I'd like to get it out sort of by the end of the month. So we can really try and draw people together by September.
Have we agreed that this would be course?
Well, we will, so really, we will touch on it again in the strategy. Because it's listed in the strategy document. So is it something that we want to do? Take that bit out if we don't. So if we can leave it until that.
Separate it. The last thing, just in terms of the timing of it, to try and broaden that thing. If everybody's at work during the day or at school, then if you're having your meetings during the day, you might, you know, sort of people coming along.
To be honest, I mean, you know, that's one thing you have to say with the town council. I'm quite happy to have a meeting whenever they want. You know, I'll come in the evening, you know, we do have our meetings in the evening. You have your full councils in the meetings in the evenings and things like that. I don't think we can be accused of not having it. So at times where we exclude people, if people want it on a Saturday afternoon, we'll have it on a Saturday afternoon. I'm not, you know, I'm quite happy.
Right, thank you. We'll move then on to 222, financial update.
So circulated the, the financial report, albeit a little bit late. I apologise for that yesterday. So I don't know whether you've had a look at it and have any question, have got any questions? So income wise, we are doing reasonably well on bar fees. We're a little bit down on Carnegie High, but this is the end of the first quarter. And if you remember, we had a couple of big cancellations in the first month of the year. So we're still playing catch up in terms of that. But if you look at your financial report, it doesn't reflect this on the, on the screen. But it does say that as of now, our forward plan of bookings is something like 9,000 odd on the books. So again, I'm confident that, you know, looking at our order book, if you like, we are, we are looking to catch up and we will catch up to budget. One thing that is positive is, I know you don't know, but I know looking forward, that traditionally, August has always been a terrible month for us. We, you know, we just fall flat in our face year after year. Through some of the marketing of venue hire and stuff like that, that Hazel's been working on, we seem to have a really decent uptake of people using the facilities through August. So if that's anything to go by, I'm, one thing I have, I've had a chat with the team is, December is absolutely grand. And, and I have said to a couple of members of the team, you know, I know we are keen to, to deliver way above our budget. But we do have to realise that we are able to turn around and provide, you know, customer expectations. So December, we are packing a lot in. So we will, hopefully that month will be very, very good for us. So I'm confident we can catch up on that. The Guildhall Tea Room is a little bit over budget on the income. And market fees, although we downgraded the market budget for 2022, 2023, we are there or thereabouts, believe it or not, with the few stores that we've got. But that's nothing to be too proud of. Because we've downgraded our budget to reflect the decline in the market over the years. But it is, it is quite pleasing that we've put out some posts again through Hazel to try and attract people over and above, even if it's not the weekly markets. And we're starting to get some inquiries now. We've got a, hopefully, we've got a lovely cake stall that's, that's coming from Berry vicinity. She's hopefully going to come on our market, on our weekly market, which is good. But there's also others that want to do more than just the weekly market. So we've got a nice jewellery stall and beauty products that are going to come on, hopefully in the next week or two. So, so there are some inquiries, which is always encouraging. So hopefully, over the next few weeks, we can build it up a little bit.
Brendan.
I can't just clarify, so ignoring the markets, the stores that we have, like Webber's Spoons and all that, will that go into the market funding?
No. So I've had this, so I've had this conversation with, with the town clerk and the finance manager, and disappointingly for our budget, the income from, it's an extension to their property lease. So the payment that they're making for that area goes into properties. So, so we don't get income from the shambles units, the Royal British Legion, NADs Army, all that kind of stuff. And that is just an extension to their, to their building lease. Having said that, if we have additional traders or street food traders such as roasties, then, then yes, it does come into this budget. And actually, roasties are trading over, is it five or six days a week? Five, six days, I think. And actually, when you look at it, if they stay and we talk to them on a regular basis, if nothing else, to buy some of the product, they, they're really pleased. And it's going well for them, more so in the evening or the early evening than lunchtime. But hopefully that'll improve for them. And the income from that is, is really good. So hopefully, we can get a couple of more, more traders that want to come on non-market days. And I think one or two of these might well do that, which would be, which would be nice.
They are keen to get other people on as well?
One of, one of the things, so where am I, Mark?
So just on.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot of things that will come through on the tennis.
Yeah, I I I'm taking a happy way down to the markets and talking to the stall holders. And generally, I get a very positive vibe from them, mostly now, um and the way you've set up the market now. People are certainly seem to think that we have a bigger market now, in in a way, you know, it's more, a bit more compact than it used to be. But they seem to think that we have more stores now, well, we do, but not as many as.
No, we don't have as many, unfortunately, and um and that's, you know, that has declined over the years. I mean, it wasn't many years ago, Tuesday Tuesday market was certainly um absolutely bursting. I mean, there was a period of time um where we used to have twenty stores on that market on a Tuesday. Saturday was our biggest problem, because there was more opportunity for them to go to other markets. But unfortunately for us, the Tuesday market is struggling a little bit, um. So, yeah, we we need to work hard on that, and we are, we are getting some inquiries, so that's a positive thing.
Yeah, ju- just talking on the markets, because obviously being Jenny in town every day, but um. The trader that has the longest stall.
Yeah, very technical.
He, yeah, and they was along the roadside.
Yeah.
Which was great, because the week before, there was blocking off the shops.
So, so.
So is.
So agenda, so agenda item two O four two two, can I just ask?
Yeah, leave it.
Us to leave it to them, but I will come back to that, because there are some points I want to share with the committee that we need to do in the future.
So if no further, finance points, we'll move on, but I just will make, we did have a. Meeting where councillor Jeremy was requesting staff cost allocation, that I did meet with the finance officer. To talk about a way of representing that, and and there's no quick fix on that, so I'm looking to meet with Alan. Um during the course of July, to throw some ideas together. Um it does affect all committees, the way that, you know, some of our customers, and we can't act in isolation, it needs to be. Put through the finance committee and and what they feel, both from a. Practical purposes, we don't want to create work for the finance function, because it all takes time and effort, and if they're doing that, they're not doing all the other good stuff. We need them to do, but also what are we going to get from it? And it's understanding the users of those, the financial information, um rather than analysing everything to the nth degree. Whereas, you know, we're spending all this time to do something that we're not going to change our opinion of.
Broke down everything up, and saying, what's this cost, what's that cost? That's hard to do, because what do you do? If you say, right, we don't need that employee, so you're not going to deliver that function.
So I'm not going to dwell on that, I'm just making it feel like I have spoken, I'm going to speak with him through. During the course of July and just throw some more ideas together, Mike.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, because I feel very strongly about the decision that, that, you know, I I feel I feel I'm here as councillor to make decisions. And I need evidence and and information, and if I've got the evidence, I'm guessing, so I'm really disappointed that we couldn't see what the costs are as well as what we are doing. Um what's what's next stepping in your view with Tim?
To to sit down with Alan to say, look at the various departments, not just venues and that. Because whatever you do here, you need to be consistent uh elsewhere. So whether it be venue, the cost of the rates or the, you know, the cemetery, um the water, uh water usage. All the types of things on that, as well as staff costs, staff cost is our biggest cost as a council, you know, an organisation like this. And that will have the biggest input, impact, but we know, and we've spoken about this in the past, that, you know, that are shared costs. Now, David doesn't spend all his time just sitting in the Carnegie Way, he's looking and coming, he's doing lots of other things, so we need. To come up with a, an idea or a way that can give you a indication of what the costs are. Um for the various functions, but at the same time, not expect them to be analysed to the nth degree. But I think I need to chat this through with Alan further, so that we get this halfway house rather than going to.
I think, I'm glad to hear what you're saying, I I wonder whether I'm going forward, might be to say that we need to do a survey, as it were. Perhaps on one period of time, say, and then we make assumptions about the next eleven months, and we're ready to save on some of the chi. So so to give a particular case, in terms of the Gildor Tea Rooms, for example, I would like to know. Roughly how many hours of staff time to to actually run the tea room, and that includes, for example. Whether there's a significant failure of time in putting out the tables and showing them, taking them back again, perhaps an hour a day. For, maybe any ten minutes, but whatever length of time is that, that is some significance, it's it's so many quid that's up of the, someone is um bait package. So I wouldn't want someone to be feeling that, or Alan in particular, to be feeling this, I'll do this every month. Maybe we just put a sample month, all right, September twenty twenty two. And we do it again in September twenty twenty three, that there ought to be a way of giving us a a pretty good indication of what. Staff costs are without getting down to the last penny every month.
Yeah, I've got Jenny and David, but I just will make comment on that, and you're right, Mike, it could be. That rather than do this every month, you'd ask for a specific report, right, we would like to have a report for the nine months, the tea rooms in operation. What is the, you know, income per cost, um and the non-financial things, like you say, um time, well, it does have a a financial implication. But if you want it in hours, you maybe not want it in costed, because you might have a different person doing it at a different rate. Um so I think maybe we choose to have reports on specific items as and when we we need to focus on them. Jenny and David.
I'm getting a bit lost here, it's unusual, I know, and but surely the um staff. I tea rooms, any other staff that come, that's all dealt with by personnel. Of the last year, this time, do the individual committees actually, are they uh wages? Payments come from these individual committees?
No.
No, so this is where I'm getting lost, why is? Any committee, I'm not going to just say this one, any committee asking what staff hours are, what they, and rates and that. Because that all should come through personnel, it seems like this committee is going to be going into a personnel picture. And this is where I'm, this is where I'm getting a bit lost.
I think I can answer that. It the 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 idea is the, this committee is responsible for the operations of things, and so it's an operating report. Um would you enter into something if you don't have the information, so Mike's quite correct, you know, would, if we did a new venture. We want to know, of course, you'd have a business plan of some kind to together to 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 monitor it against. Uh at the moment, you know, I think it really came about when we talked about the tea room, and we've always said, once we've got a bit of time under our belt. We would then review it and see where we're going with it, um so. But in order to monitor that, you do need to understand that your biggest costs are your staff costs, so you need some kind of measure. You probably don't want to go down to individual pay rates and that, but if we said, you know, it costs ten thousand pounds to do that, and you've got income of five. Mike can require clearly say, well, why are we doing this, he's going to, you know, think, and it's, and it's to give a little bit more decision making. Uh information, rather than finding out and causing all manner of personnel problems.
Well, this is, this is what I'm saying, this is where I'm getting lost, because to me, personnel, the personnel committee.
And that's why I I I need to, to chat with Alan to see what is a possible. Way of giving Mike the information he would like to have a decision without.
I'm just saying, that's where I'm getting a bit lost.
David Jordan's coming. So so there is a, it it really depends how how down in the weeds you want to get. If if you if you really want to go right down into the minutiae, it's going to be very difficult. But it, I'll just take uh Mike's point about the tea room, because in terms of the tea room. It is probably the easiest element of our budget that we could give that information to, because. The person that's employed actually spends pretty much ninety percent of their time within those four walls. So we have a really good idea, there's not that much pulling and pushing over across uh several dis- different aspects. So I I I actually think that there's possibly, once every quarter, you could choose. An area of the business or 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 our committee business, where you could look at it in a more specific way. Just to see whether, you know, so I think the bar income, for instance, the bar income, we look at that, we go, actually, you know, that's pretty good. It's above budget and all the rest of it, but you also need to understand that we do use some extra sessional staff. So are we utilising them in the right way? So we can show you when we employ sessional staff, there is a need, we don't just say, oh, well, that's okay, we'll employ a couple of sessional staff. And once we get everybody in, we go upstairs and, you know, have a cup of coffee. You know, we have a certain number of people that once we get to it, we look at scheduling two full-time staff and maybe a sessional one. Because other people's out, so it may be sharing that kind of information to understand um some additional costs. And actually, how how we um, how we can get to that net figure, but not the net net, if you like. The net net's going to be really, it's really difficult to do, because even with the tea room uh person. Just recently, we've got, we go through our civic season, the summer is where, and actually, Jubilee. Faber, who was our, who's our, currently our tea room supervisor, she did an awful lot of work to um to assist and support that. And that's not the tea room brief necessarily, so even even that one, which is quite easy to do at times, becomes quite complicated. But I think we can probably give you some information, uh much more than those two budget sheets, Mike, that we can probably look at it. In at certain times, um but I think we are going to go through budget process in September. And and Alan and I are looking to, we we're looking to make those areas a lot more easier. When you look at it, there's fundamentally four areas that we we operate in, so there's bar services. There's uh the catering aspects, there's the venue hire, and then there's the markets, as simple as that. We can have substructures under that, that breaks down catering into tea room, you know, all that's conferencing and all that kind of stuff. Which might mean that we have to do a bit more work, but it might give you a little bit more information about the specific areas. So hopefully, when we bring the format to you in September as first phase of that three-month budget running. Um that you'll have some say in in how we structure it.
Yeah, can I just say, I I, as you said, the tea room is probably the easiest thing, because that is a one-man job. I'd just say, for example, I forgot your name, sorry. Hazel, right, if you took Hazel, she's sitting here in this meeting, right? She's also the front of the house during the daytime.
For the council.
She's taking all the bookings, she has got a split job, how how do you say? Um in what, in 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 what committee does she belong?
But but the.
Belong to the full council.
But it gets even, but it gets even more complicated, because we're trying to say that our staff actually gets pu- pulled through other areas. If Nick was sitting in this seat, he'd say the same, he would say, look, you know what, but David used Graham and Dave um through Jubilee. And it was all to do with venues and communications, getting those plants ready for Jubilee and all the rest of it, so we are, you know. It it it.
That's why it's hard.
All I can say is, you've got a bloody good team who are utilised across the area to try and do the best we possibly can. Sometimes it's more difficult for someone like Alan to bring it right down to ten percent of that week's time was here. It's very difficult, but I think we can probably provide you with with more information. Um if we look at it as more in detail, every quarter, we pick an area where we can really drill down into it. And I think it'll give you a flavour of how it's operating.
Jenny and Mike.
Yes, sorry, when when we do that, so say, say you do it every quarter, the type of indexing. What's being asked for, so if you say that quarter is staff time or whatever, and then you go on that, and then we can step. That to the next one, so that that can be prepared, right, so you're always setting it right, yeah.
I I I, when you're looking at.
I was just getting a bit confused here, if if what.
But when you're looking at sessional staff, maybe that is something that is included in this, because they are, they are specifically engaged. Uh 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 a sum of money per hour for a specific duty. So that is something perhaps we should show, certainly.
Roy, you want to go?
Yeah, just quickly to say, I think there might be a matter of prioritising in what, so for example. It might be more important to know what the costs are in new ideas, or in those which we have chosen as a council to. Provide, which are not required by statute to provide, so things that we've got to do, in a sense, you can argue, it's less important. That we know where the finance is coming from, how the money's being spent, but if it's something we've chosen to do, like running a tea room. Then we really, really need to know, is this running a loss, is it running a profit, is it creating even? And then we can make a decision whether we're covering on or not, you've got to have staff in the room, if it's a disaster, we need to know that.
No, but can I also say, and just remind everybody, we opened that tea room on the twenty third of September last year. I mean, Hazel comes from a a business in the town, which is a successful business, and and we had this conversation not so long ago. And and even, you know, no disrespect, Hazel, when I say even you, but even you said, you know. Blimey, you've only been going a few months, businesses usually take two or three years before they can actually, so at least let's get us through the summer. Because we didn't have that, we we actually opened the doors at probably the worst time of the year. So um maybe by the time we get to September, you know, we can at least say, well, here's the first year, and I can tell you. And I'm not technically good enough to to flag it up on here at the moment, but I do run my own spreadsheet, which actually has a little bit more detail. For the tea room, so I'm quite happy to go through any of it, and it does show over the last, well, no disrespect. And I'll give you a better praise now, since you've been pushing it, we've seen a huge, I mean, I was on holiday and I was getting some updates, and I was looking at it thinking, blimey. The weather must be better at home than it is here, because um you know, they are, they are, them, you know, they haven't turned over in a daily take. You know, less than a a really good figure, and we, at the end of the month, I came back and I did the end of June. And actually, it's the first time we've made that sum of money as a gross uh profit. There's a little bit more expense to come out of it, but it was a really good indicator that actually, you know, we're doing quite well now. Um so I think we need a little bit more time before we take any decisions of whether we can close it down or not, but.
Brenda, you want?
Yeah, can I propose, uh Mike's idea, unless Mike wants to propose it, that that's where we do start, things that we don't, and I, because I think, going forward. That's a good um indicator for every committee within the council, it's that we know we have to have allotments. We don't have to have cemeteries, so it's about looking at, the the council's looking at what they don't have to run, but they run it. Because it's something nice.
I think, you know, this committee, we just keep ourselves to what we want there, but I think, you know, David's right. An annual review of the tea room would be, my view, a a good way of saying, well, like, twelve months now. What are the winners, what are the successes, it doesn't have to be a massive report, a single three by four, to say what we've done, what it, and what it's cost us. And I think that'd be useful to guide people, bearing in mind the tea room was done as part of the heritage um bit as well. So it was something that we, when we were bought into, when we accepted the money to to do the steps, uh and that. But a an annual review of it, I think, is is fair comment, and you can give a bit more information in there, and we can consider it then.
But we also have to consider that it it, there's a social factor, there's a a a side to the community.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then it opens up the footfall into the building, it gives us opportunities to show off some of our.
But that can be brought out in that report, you know.
If Mike, if Mike's happy, then maybe we look at it in October, because it's still within our budget phasing, and then uh that that's pretty much. Uh year one trading, and then if we if we if we say, well, year one trading is great, we have to understand it's year one, and we've started from nothing. But we're now going to go into winter, what do we need to do to make sure that we don't fall too far back, so let's.
Thing it also aids your budget setting process, you've got, looking back what you've done in the last twelve months, what were our aspirations for the next twelve months?
And and the other thing to understand is, it, you know, we also, we also will include, um because it it's within that room. And using those facilities, um other income streams from it, so we are. We are very pleased now that we've got to a point now where we can start doing regular wakes and things. That will go into the tea room income, so it's not ten till two thirty, Tuesday to Saturday, you know. And if we had a wake, you know, and unfortunately, that's quite a regular business, hopefully, um because of the circumstances, but. It's rea- it's it's a really good, you know, it's really good business, to be honest, and um and we've already got another booking, unfortunately. It's always unfortunate, but we've got another booking for uh, you know, ten days' time. Um so again, that's going to make a huge difference to that income. So again, that's going to make a huge difference to that income, income stream.
So we we can schedule that for an annual review
Yeah.
um in the October meeting, please. So the future financial reporting structure, I think we've segwayed into that on two O one twenty-two because I think some of the things that David and Alan speak about and the way the budget setting will go is going to be up for review there. Um. But also, we've just set ourselves a target for the October meeting, for the tea room review. So I think, I haven't got anything further really to to discuss on that matter. So two O two twenty-two, the marketing report.
Yep.
Hazel, you're in charge of that one?
Yes, I was trying to do a marketing report today. You should have had it all sent out this week. Um. If you haven't, I'll try to look it up. So, um, we've continued discussing our messages of the week as a team. Uh, as we said last time, all try and meet together, plan our posts across the um week to look at what kind of things we can share. That includes venues, but it's also including like what the type of things, events that the council have got going on, please. Um, we're producing packs for outside groups still to distribute across different locations, um alongside everyone that we are working with councillors. Um, we're looking straight for these ties as well, and some of the groups are actually giving us feedback on the kinds of places to visit because that maybe we can kind of tailor the packs a bit more because of these areas you're listed, and those are children's parties, but you are going to need, I don't know, all your part of tribute acts and vice versa, things like that. And so we're looking at that. The poster sites around venues and the rotunda are continuing to be updated as always. Uh, it's completely full at the moment, to the point where I think we're looking at having to take them down the day of the event and put the next one up. So we've got lots of bits of pieces going in that, which is good. Um. A couple of weeks ago, we had a gazebo out on the marketplace. We provided for one of our groups that we partner with. Um, they were advertising an open day that they're doing within our venues. Um, and they also have been working with us to distribute leaflets and they go all across um kind of breaking wide areas. Um, and they actually took some of our leaflets to put on the stalls as well to distribute alongside what they were doing and show, you know, anyone coming over. So that was quite good. Um. There was recently an art exhibition involving schools. Um, we worked with, I went and spoke to some of the schools, and we worked with them, tagging them into the venues. And I'm asked when they put their posts up to advertise parents, and they tagged the venues in as well. Seems like a serious thing, but as soon as you tag a venue in, you've got a link to that page. And then someone clicks on that to see their event, and you've got obviously all the advertising underneath. Um, and we work by tagging them in as well to make sure everyone knows they're working with us. Um, we're going to continue looking at doing that with other events. Um, and I spoke to actually a hire this morning about that as well. Um, we're currently testing the new website. It's looks quite good so far. Um, we've basically got a kind of basic version of it. There's, it's been sent down to um the real house and it's, um, we're currently pulling apart anything that we think that we might have missed, anything we might have added. We're looking at wood tabs and making sure we can cover all the areas of um town council, but that also includes the event um pages as well. Um, in terms of social media, we'll be looking at the new um tea room member of staff, because we see babies and maternity. Um, and we'll be trying to meet with them um to get more content out on social media and increase the footfall in there. Um, but also welcome them to get feedback on what people are seeing on social media because it's important to get that page up and running a bit more as well. Um. We'll talk about branding across our venues. Um, me and Tom had this conversation this week. So making sure that any of our posters that go out have got our branding on them because when we put out town council things, obviously it has, set for town council top, we have kind of missed a bit of a um marketing gap there where we haven't put, it says Carnegie, but we don't have our logo on it. So if we do the Carnegie Guildhall, what we're going to do is try and make sure that our logo is on those posters so it becomes a recognisable image for people, you know. Um, it will pick up more people coming in, hopefully, and more people understanding that they see that logo instantly and they think, oh, I know that is in town and that they're doing another event.
Can I just stop up on it? So if you've got um Carnegie Guildhall.
Yep.
And then you just have the town council down the bottom because that, all that means is the town council on the building. You are selling the the brand, the Carnegie or the Guildhall.
Yes, so what.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So what we normally do is when our hires contact us, there is a specific format we have tweaked and changed and has now gone around to everybody in the venues, that when they send me a post on social media, they use a specific format so that all the information is there. But there is also a thing that um I'm working with Tom currently, that they send to the hirers, and it needs certain types of information on there. And it normally says like at the Carnegie, but I've said to him, and he's said to me as well, that our logo needs to be on there. So even if it's just in its corner, just a small logo in the corner, it just says which of the venue it's at, the logo is just there. And it's just about getting that pictorial recognition of it as well as, you know, someone walks past, they might see that on a poster in town, think, okay, and then they walk past a building and go, oh, it's that building. It's just, it's it's such a small thing, but it's it's about getting the branding right in that. Um. And we have talked about looking at um bits inside the venue as well. We currently have Live at the Carnegie across the um bar area, but it's looking at getting that in the entrance area as well and just making sure that we're tying into the Guildhall tea room when you walk into the Guildhall and things like that as well. So, yeah, it's getting that on the posters. Um. Within the venues, they go, we're looking at new poster sites, leaflet holders, uh making it more accessible to people to come in and pick up leaflets. Um, I was looking this morning at trying to get one into the main entrance area, but we're trying to tweak where we can put it with the doors opening and things like that. Just so people can literally walk in, get the leaflets and walk back out again. They don't necessarily have to wait for a member of staff to be available to speak to if they just want some information. Um. Going on feedback from last time, um, we've looked through our systems, our, all our tickets booked through our venue, through our ticketing site, have got a tick box option to sign up to our newsletter on it. And it also has a feedback box on where they've heard about the events. So when you click, when you go to book a ticket, it asks you on there, where did you hear about the event? It gives you a list of options. Um, so that we can get more feedback on where our advertising is obviously working. Uh, this obviously gives us a better idea of um where to be marketing, but it also gives them a kind of um an option to tag it in, obviously. Um, but we're looking at wider ways of doing this within the centres. So that will be, um, we're planning on looking at feedback sheets of the venues. Um. We're still trying to format that because obviously it has to be done in a certain way that can be awesome, useful for us to use. But it will also be where did you hear about the event on there? It will be, um, these, you know, would you like to sign up for our newsletter? Here's the address for it. Just trying to get more feedback on, um, maybe where we're missing out on marketing, but equally where marketing's working well as well. Um.
Hello.
There's a fire alarm. Interesting.
Is it retained? You're sitting there.
Sorry.
It doesn't matter. You just have to tell us if it's not retained. Is it retained?
I don't know.